All right, we're gonna get started. We're gonna get started. I am fighting a cold, so bear with me if I lose my voice. I'll call and order the meeting of the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board. Today is the 25th of Thursday, April 25, 2024. Present at the front table to my far left is Jessica Battali, a voting member.
Good night.
Ed McGargy, a voting member.
Good evening.
My left, Ernie Angelo, our solicitor.
Hello.
Bill Roeth, to my right, a voting member. Jesse Point, a voting member. And Gary Smith, our zoning officer. This is a special meeting for the sole purpose of KC 24-02. Before we get to that though, Bill, would you please lead us in a pledge? Please rise. So, we are here for KC 24-02. Savage Sisters Recovery, Inc., applicant, Leslie of 1710B Road, Havertown, PA DC, Folio #22020106300, who seeks a variance from the provisions of Section 182, 206B1, to allow more than three unrelated persons occupying a dwelling unit, living together and maintaining a common household, per the definition of a family. In addition, the applicant is requesting relief from Section 104, 10A, and 10411, with regard to requiring an inspection for each change in tenant and for providing a list of individual tenants. Property is owned R4 and located in the second ward. So, we have Bob. You hear Bob? There you are. And Jennifer?
Yes.
John? Welcome. Okay. So, when last we met, Adam had testified on your behalf. There was an outstanding standing issue, and hopefully you can address tonight. If not, I think this is gonna require another special meeting.
It is.
So...
I will be providing some exhibits.
Okay. So, and you have A1 through A8 identified and marked, right?
Yes.
So, why don't we pick up where we left off? Go ahead. We don't have pictures.
Yeah, there's pictures on ours too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you gonna go through these and identify? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We will.
Yep.
You're back, right?
Yes, good morning, or good evening. Yeah, that's actually the first topic I'd like to address.
I think the board already ruled on that.
We did.
That issue. Are we gonna revisit that or just decided?
We're pretty clear on what the actual law is on. But Ernie?
I think Mr. DeLuca's here, he's representing the client. He did most of the testimony or the questioning last time.
And I'm the supervising attorney.
Yeah, I think what we did last time is we noted the objection and allowed to continue. So, objection noted. Same as...
Okay, all right then. If that isn't an issue, the next issue that we'll address is the standing matter. So, on the top of your pile that I gave you, you can disregard the community legal services. That was regarding my certified legal internship. The next packet is purposes and uses of a will in PA. And I'm gonna use the second one, the WM Penn Parking Garage, Inc., v Pittsburgh, in tandem. And then we also have exhibit... I apologize. The exhibits are stapled in one packet, and you kinda have to flip through them because they're printed on double sides. But it's, Exhibit 2 is the will which we'll address soon. That is for the standing matter.
That's this?
No.
What's Exhibit 2?
It's a will.
Yes.
So, under the Exhibit 1 package, flip through it, there's exhibits attached, so you're gonna have to flip.
Yeah.
And I believe that...
Wait, hold on one second. We already have...
Yeah, we're gonna have to identify.
I think we already have Exhibits 1 through...
Yeah.
A8, so yeah. We'll remark.
Exhibit 9 for the record.
Yes.
And I've given it to the court reporter. Asked that the will be marked as Exhibit 9.
Oh, so what you call Exhibit 2 in this pack will become Exhibit A9?
That's correct.
Yeah, apologies. Do we all have it?
So, 1 will become 9, is what you're telling?
Yes.
Exhibit 2 becomes 1.
Exhibit 2.
Exhibit 2 will become 9.
Yeah. Okay, are we all there? All right. Would you like us to address this exhibit prior to... Yes, okay. And then I guess I can address the other exhibits afterwards, so we can handle the standing matter. So, Exhibit 2 is the DeFalcis will by Carmine DeFalcis. And this goes in tandem with the two top packets that I gave you as well. That is case law. Those are the purposes and uses of a will, along with the WM Penn Parking Garage, Inc., v Pittsburgh. So, here we have Mr. DeFalcis's will. On page 2, under Section 3, it says, "Residuary estate." "I give all the rest of my estate to my wife, Alma DeFalcis, if my wife survives me by 30 days," which she did. Additionally, this will specifically states on page 9, subsection D, that Alma has the permission to lease any property with or without options to purchase, and with regard to any time limitation imposed by law, to grant options for leases, and to enter into leases with rentals based upon business receipts, or profits, or other conditions." That would be the lease of Savage Sisters, which is expressly granted in this will. In addition to that, turning to the purposes and uses of a will, under intestate succession, even if there were no will, Pennsylvania law provides that all Pennsylvania property not disposed of by will passes according to Pennsylvania laws of intestacy. If there is a surviving spouse, which there is, that'd be Alma, the individual who signed the lease, the surviving spouse takes the entire intestate if the decedent has no surviving issue or surviving parent. In this case, there are two sons, neither of which are claiming rights to the property. Finally, in the WM Penn Parking...
I would just object to that as hearsay. We have no documentation of them not objecting to this will.
It doesn't matter, there's a will, so intestate succession wouldn't matter. The will will control.
Additionally, last session, we did have Mr. Ekel here, who stated that he was in correspondence with the son, who is a doctor, who I also spoke to, and there is no issue if there will, if there were.
I would just object to that as now double hearsay about what someone said, about what someone said.
What I was going to say is, even if there were...
My suggestion would be if the will is what is governing...
Right.
... refrain from statements that provide hearsay that are outside of court order.
Got it. Okay. So, turning to page 8 of 20, it's in the top right corner. You'll see the page numbers of the WM...
8 of 20 of Exhibit A9?
Uh, no, sorry. The, still the WM Penn Parking Garage, Inc., v Pittsburgh. Those are the first, the case laws are not exhibits.
Scott, Billy.
All right, so page 8 of 20. If you look on the right side, four paragraphs under where it says "A," it begins with "The core concept." So, it says, "The core concept, of course, is that a person who is not adversely affected in any way by the matter he seeks to challenge is not aggrieved thereby, and has no standing to obtain a judicial resolution of his challenge. In particular, it is not sufficient for the person claiming to be aggrieved to assert the common interest of all citizens in procuring obedience in the law." On the next page, it's 10 of 20. If you look in the second paragraph where it says 24, "Thus, the requirement of a substantial interest simply means that the individual's interests must have substance. There must be some discernible adverse effect to some interest other than the abstract interest of all citizens in having others comply with the law." This case law specifically goes to Ms. Buzidlow and her clients not having standing to bring this claim against us at all, because they are not substantially impacted by what is in the will, and whether the will was done whatever way after Mr. DeFalcis passed. She doesn't have...
I think the, they didn't bring a claim, or they're not bringing a claim in connection with the will itself. It's the case. I think it's established that, as it relates to standing, there are actually two types of standing. Standing is in the Court of Common Pleas, which is separate, different than standing before this body. This body's standing is actually less stringent than standing before the Court of Common Pleas. Typically, standing down here for an aggrieved party, and it's presumed to be aggrieved if they're in close proximity to the subject property. And I recall that Ms. Priscilla's client lived within...
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street. So, I clearly think they're standing to be here in this action. The question is whether your client has standing to be here, based on the ownership of the property. What I understand is, what you're claiming is that the will here requests the property from husband to wife...
Correct.
Through the, you know, estate process, through the will. And therefore, because of that, she is the rightful owner of the property, therefore giving you state leases. Is that basically it?
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. But, yeah, the purpose of this was to say that even if Ms. Buzidlow found a problem with the will, she wouldn't have standing to bring that problem and to challenge our standing, because if they're...
She has a right to object to it. See, the standing issue is the burden of the avenue to prove that they have standing.
Correct. Yeah. We do, under the will and even under intestacy, if the will weren't valid for some reason.
I do have to object to this will being entered into the record at this point. If you want me to object later, I can, but...
No, I mean, you can object to it now.
If you want me to explain, or you wanna wait till the end of their presentation, I just wanna make sure I have an opportunity.
I mean, I think I get the gist of it. I mean, I'm not sure what you have left. I mean, the idea is...
There's nothing left of the word of the will.
What's the objection?
Is there someone who is here that can be questioned validity of this will? You have a witness?
Well, I mean, I think, I think what Mr. DeLuca's gonna say is the will is self-proving.
Has it been probated? Has it been entered by the court? Has it been...
It doesn't need it.
Has it had an opportunity to be contested? And if this is the case, and there's not a new deed sign, and the property hasn't actually passed to the wife, the lease needed to be executed as the administrator of this estate. So, the will, so the lease is still invalid. And at the very least, they would need to form a new lease and reapply with the proper standing. This is not in and of itself enough to establish standing, even if we accept this will as valid. And I would object to that, because it hasn't been probated by the court. It had, they had over 10 years to do this, and they haven't, which makes me very concerned about why it hasn't been probated during that time. Yeah, and if I may on that...
I mean, I would tend to, I agree that wills are self-proving. The question is, if it was probated, then I think there could be a position that it was in fact, you know, we could take judicial notice of its, you know, its proper execution and delivery at that point. And I get that it's hearsay at this point, without having it be in court record. Now, I mean, I'd take a look at what cases you submitted. So, what I would suggest to the board is to take it at least under advisement now with this, and let me take a look at what was presented.
Sure.
I understand the objection. I understand the presentation on what it is. Take a look at the case law, and then, you know, we can... The board's not gonna render a decision until it's obviously satisfied that standing is established. So, we'll take that under advisement. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold up the proceedings at this point. So, is the board okay with that recommendation?
So, was there a reason that the deceased widow executed this lease in her own capacity and not as administrator of a will that's, because that's her capacity, right? As lessor, that's your point? That you presented the will to say that she had the ability as administrator of the will to lease?
Sole beneficiary.
Or the, well, but you quoted us, I think you pointed out in the will, correct me if I'm wrong.
The... Yeah, the name or the trust? The trustee.
You, so she is, you pointed out, Section 1A, that Mr. DeFalcis is executor of the estate. And as such, under the residuary estate provision, she has the power as executrix to lease property of the deceased. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, in that capacity, she's not doing it in her individual capacity. She's doing it in executrix capacity. Yet she didn't sign the lease as executrix. She signed the lease in her own name.
But she is also the owner of the property pursuant to the residuary estate in Exhibit 3.
If this will had been probated, then I would agree with you. But until it's probated, we don't really know, do we?
Well, she, no, we do, because she's, she's the sole owner, and she's alive. There's nobody else listed as owner of this property.
I object to that. That's just not how the law works.
Okay. It seems like it's a big step of a conclusion that the will and the estate will be probated exactly in accordance with this provision. It may be the case, but we don't know until it's probated, do we?
Well, we know that she is the only owner of this property, no matter what, at this point. At this point in time, pursuant to this will...
Someone could challenge, someone could pull another will out and say, "I have a competing will." We don't know until it's probated, at which point title would presumably vest in her individually. But until that time, she's acting as executrix, not in her own capacity, right?
Um, there, so, yeah, it has been 10 years, as Ms. Buzidlow pointed out, in that 10 years...
But you don't get probated by a stoppage in Pennsylvania, so...
If somebody were to have challenged it within that time period, considering they only have two sons...
I'm sorry, can we turn up the volume, please? You don't get notice unless you're... There would be no notice to challenge it without probating it.
If I may, would the individuals...
Let's not have a round robin discussion.
In the...
A board member is asking a question.
Right.
Let's finish this conversation. And then, Jen, if you wanna interpose something, you're welcome to. Go ahead, Bill.
Within the 10-year period, if somebody were going to contest this will and try and claim the property, they would have done so already. It's been a decade. There are two sons. Neither of them are contesting the will. In fact, they're aiding their mother in helping...
Objecting again to hearsay.
Do you have...
Okay, do you have anything that shows that they are contesting the will?
It burdens on the...
You know what? I'll, I'll bring the sons in and further testimony of this as well.
Is there a reason why this will hasn't been probated, or can't be probated or finished at this point? Is it, what's the holdup?
Everything was just in her name and control, and that's the way it was done.
I would object to that, because it's not all in her name. It, they haven't proved any documents yet.
I give all the rest of my estate...
No one else has had control or ownership of this property, other than...
I'm not sure she has ownership of the property.
No, I mean...
We're looking for you to...
I understand the issue you raised. Now, I'll bring, I'll bring further testimony.
I would, I would just object to bringing this issue out any further. They had an opportunity, fair opportunity, over the past six weeks to address this issue, to bring a probated will, to show any documentation that they were attempting to probate the will, to bring a new deed, to record a new deed, to have someone come in and testify about the validity of this will. They haven't presented anything here today that's any difference or moved us any closer to proving that they have standing. And it's absolutely a waste of every neighbor in this room's time to continue with this case when they don't have standing.
Let me ask you.
You know, we can't have that. It's gonna drag this out longer and longer and longer. So, go ahead, Ernie.
Would you agree that if the board were to grant what I'm assuming is a motion to dismiss, I guess at this point?
Correct.
That it would ultimately be without prejudice, and they could come back for this board with a new application, same request, bring everybody back out?
With the proper documentation of probating this will?
Assuming the case...
Yeah. Because then they would have valid standing.
Yeah, so in essence, though, what I'm trying to get to is that we're essentially kicking a can down. Assuming that they come back with somebody next time that has and clears everything up, okay? We're not, not saying that your argument isn't, what I'm trying to get to is, if the board were to say, "Okay, look, there's a lack of standing." They can fix it, presumably, and come back here. Is it, is it efficient to at least proceed with additional testimony? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna finish tonight anyway.
No. Because the application in and of itself is invalid, they have to reapply. They reap, they applied without standing, without valid documents. And so, this particular case can't continue. So, it's not like kicking the testimony in this case down the road. It's having them reapply for a, with a valid lease document for a new case, because this case is completely invalid, they don't have standing. And it can't be corrected just by changing the documentation at this time. It started as an incorrect application prematurely.
If I may...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the case that I was just pointing out, the WM Penn Parking Garage, the point of me reading that in, addressing the, who has standing to bring this type of claim, is that Ms. Buzidlow doesn't have standing to challenge the will in this court.
Yeah, but the question, the question is, though, establishment with this board, whether there is sufficient evidence with this board to establish that your client has ownership of the property...
But we aren't, sorry.
And we can do that at any time in our case.
So, what we're saying is where...
We can do that at any time of our case, whether it's beginning, end, or whenever. If I bring in another deed, or the son, or the individual, then it's taken care of.
My, if I may, what I didn't get to finish saying... So, our client is not the owner. Our client is the individual leasing it. So, there is no standing from a party that's not aggrieved by the will itself to bring this claim.
You have to be the owner of the property.
Or, or you have to have a leasehold interest, or possessory interest, or something equitable interest?
I agree with that argument.
Yeah, and they...
All right, well, here's, here's what we're gonna do. We're not gonna dismiss the case. We're not gonna do a decision until standing is perfectly clear. So...
That's fine.
I'm telling you that straight up, right now. But I'm not gonna have all these neighbors come back out, because as Ernie described, you know, I would expect you to just file a new application, and then we'll go through, we'd have to do the direct testimony of that witness again, and everything else that was already presented.
So, take judicial notice of that.
All right, and we're gonna take a two-minute recess. You want to... Zoom the meeting of the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board. Anything else on the standing issue before we proceed?
Address one more issue.
Go ahead, Jen.
So, they just put the will into the record. Previously, at the previous hearing, I had put a deed for 1710B in the record.
Hold on one second, Jen. I'd ask everybody, please turn off your cell phones, or at least really silence them, and no sidebar conversations. Our court reporter is trying to take down everything that's said by the parties up front here, and it's very distracting for Arlene if there are sidebar conversations. Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, so, this is already in the record. I do have one additional copy, but you should all already have copies, including the applicant. If you look at the signature on the will versus the signature of Harmon on the deed to the property, you can see they are not the same signature. This is not a valid will signed by the, by, pardon, what's her name? Harmon, the property manager.
I do. I mean, I would say that we're not, we're not handwriting experts. I think what the board has decided to do is to proceed with this evening. It is taking the objection seriously. It is not ruling on the objection. It is going to give the applicant one final chance to clear up standing. If it is not cleared up at the next meeting, it will likely be that the board will dismiss the case for lack of standing.
Is there any way you could define what clearing up standing would entitle? Like, does it have to be a probated will? Does it have to be, what would you...
Look, I, I think the, look, that's an issue. I don't think the board has the purview of saying what the applicant or what the burden is for them to establish. They need to establish what, sufficiently enough for us to understand and feel that there is in fact standing there.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Can we call our first witness for the evening?
Sure.
All right, we're going to call Melanie Beddys.
Melanie, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And your full name and the capacity in which you appear?
Melanie Beddys. Beddys is B-E-D-D-I-S.
And what, what capacity are you?
Yeah, what's your relationship to Savage Sisters?
Oh, I was a resident in the Savage Sisters program. And an employee.
Currently, you're an employee?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Melanie, how were you a resident with Savage Sisters?
I lived in one of the recovery houses.
And how long was your program in the home?
One year.
Did you participate in any activities that Savage Sisters offered to their residents?
Yes, I participated in trauma therapy, yoga, goddess days, kickboxing, softball, barbecues.
Did you pay for those?
No.
Did other individuals that lived in the house with you also participate?
I would object to this testimony, as it's not relevant to 1710B and is talking about something completely different.
I would disagree, because we're discussing activities that a family would conduct together, such as barbecues, in-home activities. They do yoga together, kickboxing together, therapy, something that a family does together, and that's the whole point of today's hearing.
But it is at another facility and not at this facility.
And I would say that she brought in LNI violations from another facility, and also found that those were relevant.
To counteract testimony that you were following all regulations, would follow all the regulations of this facility?
That wasn't actually the testimony that I was...
I would just ask them, if there's gonna be an objection, it'd be one objection.
Agreed.
Hold on, and not a talking...
Yeah.
You're right. We're gonna hear it.
Okay.
So, we're gonna hear it, Jen. Go ahead.
Did other residents that lived in the home with you participate in those activities?
Yes, we did most of our activities together.
And did you do any, did you do any activities with solely the individuals in the home with you?
Yes, we, you know, celebrated birthdays together, holidays, had family meals, movie nights.
And what does, what does a family meal look like?
So, typically, it would range from, you know, different meals, whether it was breakfast or dinner. We would take turns of different girls preparing the meal. Somebody would do the dishes, somebody would set the table, and just really like spending time together, talking about our day, issues maybe we were having, and, you know, just eating together.
Just to clarify, what, when were you a resident of Savage Sisters?
From 2021 to 2022.
Was 2021 the first attempt at getting sober for you?
No.
How many times, approximately, did you previously attempt to... How many times approximately did you previously attempt to get sober?
Approximately 20 times.
And how long did you actively misuse substances?
For about 10 years.
Did you relapse again after having entered the Savage Sisters housing program?
No.
Do you still live in the home?
No.
How long... You said you were in the home from 2021 until 2022?
Yes.
Did you leave after you completed the program?
Yes.
And did you maintain contact with... Like, did you maintain contact with the housing program after you graduated?
Yes, I actually started working for the housing program, but I moved in with two other previous residents that were in the housing program.
What was your capacity when you started working with the housing program?
So I oversaw... I originally started as overseeing the women's houses and just enforcing the same rules that I once lived by.
What's the title for that?
I was the program director.
Okay. And as the programs director, you didn't live in the house anymore?
No.
Did other individuals that lived in the home with you, did they still reside there today?
There is, I believe, one woman who still lives in the house I was in.
And you said that you live with other residents? So you still communicate with prior housemates?
Yes, two other people who graduated from the Savage Sisters program got an apartment with myself.
Why did you choose to reside with them after you completed the program?
I built very strong relationships with them. They became some of my best friends, and I wanted that... I wasn't ready to live on my own yet, I wanted that same sense of accountability that I had while living at Savage Sisters.
What was different about the Savage Sisters program and their housing program compared to your prior programs that did not work?
Sorry. I just... I felt like for the first time, there was people that like actually cared about me. I was a part of something. I had that like sense of community and, you know, I had other women in my house that I built relationships with, and I had people that told me I was worth a chance at recovery, and I was more than just somebody that struggled with addiction.
Outside of that, you mentioned that you were employed with Savage Sisters as the programs director. Did you hold any other positions with Savage Sisters?
I originally started as the outreach coordinator, and then I was the program director for about two years, and now I'm just the inventory manager.
Okay, so you just hold the inventory management position now?
Yes.
And... So during your testimony, you've used the word "family" a lot. Based on your personal knowledge and experience with Savage Sisters, why do you call Savage Sisters a family?
I was in a home with, you know, anywhere from five to six other people. Some had more experience than me, some had less experience than me, and I was able to learn from those people, I was able to trust those people, do activities with them. I've celebrated birthdays, I've gone to funerals with these people, you know, staff and the people I lived with alike, and, you know, people I still talk to on a daily basis, people I can call when I'm going through something, whether it's good or bad, and people who have just celebrated me and cheered me on in my recovery journey.
And just to clarify, how long have you been sober since joining the Savage Sisters home?
I will have three years in July.
Congratulations.
I have no further questions.
Okay, Ms. Beddys, is that how you say your name?
Beddys.
Beddys, okay. First question, you said you lived in a Savage Sisters recovery home. How many people lived in that home with you?
Anywhere from either five to six other people.
Okay, and was that home located in Philadelphia?
Yes.
Do you know if that home had a permit to be used as a sober living facility or for more than three unrelated people?
I have... That would be outside my scope of knowledge.
Okay, that's fine. During the time you lived there during that one year, did the residency of that home stay the same? Like, were those five to seven people the same throughout that whole year?
No.
So they switched while you were in residency?
Well, we would have people graduate and then new people enter the program.
Okay. Hold on one second. So you said that you didn't pay for services. Did you pay any money to live there?
I paid rent, yes.
Okay, and how much rent did you pay?
I paid $170 a week.
Let's see. And so during the year you were there, you said people came and went. You graduated from the program. Did everyone who was living with you graduate from the program?
I personally did not keep track of that, but in my personal experience, I would say that a majority of people did successfully graduate that program.
Okay. And you currently live with two people, and you said that, you know, that provides you with some sort of comfort, accountability, right?
Yes.
So that isn't sufficient for you to be accountable for your actions, right?
Now with long-term recovery, yes, that is sufficient.
Let's see. You mentioned that you were an employee of Savage Sisters, correct?
Yes.
And in that capacity, you at one point were managing properties, managing homes, correct?
At one point, yes.
So are you familiar with the rules and regulations for running those homes, then?
Yes.
Okay. So before you had... You had testified that it was not in your capacity to make... To know whether or not the homes were compliant with rules and regulations.
You asked me at the time that I was a resident, no, I have...
Okay. Are you aware now that in Philadelphia, you are only allowed to have three unrelated people living together?
Objection, she's no longer in that position, and that's no longer knowledge that she needs to have.
It's absolutely relevant, she's... If you give me a moment, I can prove why it's relevant. Okay. I had put in... You, let's see, do you have any other connection with Savage Sisters other than being an employee?
Are we continuing questioning, or are you going to...
Yes, I'm explaining why it's relevant, and then I'll come back to that once.
You kind of have a question, there's an objection to a question. You're going to continue with the testimony?
Okay, so...
My question is...
Yeah, so it is relevant. I do believe that there's a greater connection that Ms. Beddys is serving with Savage Sisters that would also require her to be aware of rules and regulations.
So in essence, what you're saying is give you some leeway to ask some more questions to establish why it's relevant?
Correct. So Ms. Beddys, do you have any other capacity in which you interact with Savage Sisters?
A personal capacity?
Yes.
I consider these people my family and friends, yes.
Do you own any property that you lease to Savage Sisters?
No.
What is your... Can you spell your name for me? Okay. May I have one moment to look something up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, my apologies, I have my Melanies confused. There are two Melanies. My apologies for this one.
So objection sustained.
Yes. All right, so, let's see, I do have a few more questions here. Was there anything else other than the program that you would consider being instrumental in your recovery? Like, was there then preceding this attempt at recovery that maybe had a greater impact or anything like that, or do you think the sole reason you were able to get sober was Savage Sisters?
I wholeheartedly believe my sole reason for being sober was because of Savage Sisters.
Let's see. I think that is all my questions for you, then.
Just have one redirect. Just to clarify, you said that there were between five to seven people in the home with you when you lived there?
Yes.
How many people with those five to seven people in addition to you, how many people were typically in a room?
So it was three people in one bedroom, two people in another bedroom, and then the house manager had their own room.
No further questions?
No further questions.
May I? Thank you. Ms. Beddys, congratulations on your continued recovery.
Thank you.
So you'd say that your one year in your recovery house has been a success today, correct? And you resided there for four years?
For one full year, yes.
And on cross-examination, I should say redirect, you testified when you lived as a resident there, you did have a roommate?
Yes.
Were you in the one roommate or two roommate room?
So the house manager having their own bedroom is a newer policy. I was not fortunate enough to have my own bedroom when I lived there.
So was that a three-bedroom?
I had two roommates in the beginning and then one roommate for most of the time I was there.
The house manager had their own room?
Not at the time of me living there, no.
Which explains the seven at some point.
Yes.
What impact, if any, on your personal recovery at that time did the number of people residing within that house have on your recovery?
As I stated, it was very important for me to live with people who had a little bit more clean time than me, and then a little bit less clean time than me, because I was always able to learn from somebody that had more time, and I was able to help somebody that had less time. And it just kept things fresh in the house. There was always, you know, somebody going through something that you could relate to, or were going to relate to at some point.
How does that impact your recovery or your ability to recover? I mean, obviously, you have more social environment, more people that are there, but how does having more people help you fight your addiction?
For one thing, for me personally, boredom was like a very big trigger early on. So to always kind of have somebody around to, you know, kind of like keep you entertained and keep away those thoughts in the beginning. But also, you know, part of... I am in a 12-step fellowship, and part of that, you know, the main principle is helping somebody else, so always being around somebody else to be able to help was very beneficial.
Now, you then moved on to become a program director. Was that the same house or was that a different house?
I oversaw all the houses. I wasn't the program director while I lived on property.
So as a program director, can you explain the number of people living in the different houses?
So in the South Philly houses, when I was the program director, it was six at every house.
Six, and then a manager, or six total?
Six total.
In your capacity as a program director, what impact, if any, did you see the number of people at that house have on those other person's recovery?
Like I said, especially... So when you come into a recovery house, you don't necessarily have a job right away, right? And if you live with one or two people that maybe have been there for a while, they're probably going to have a job. People who are also know, you guys can go look for a job together, there's always somebody around, somebody's going to pick up on your behaviors. Notice if, you know, you're not yourself. It gives you more opportunity to be social and to, you know, meet new people and really hold each other accountable. I think that's why, you know, it's super important. Like I said, now that I'm in long-term recovery, yes, I only have two roommates, but if that would have been the case in the beginning, I don't think that would have went well for me.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
I do have a follow-up question. When you were there, you said that there was five or six people living with you. At any given time, were there times where there wasn't that many people in the house?
Yes.
And you maintained your serenity?
Yes.
I did actually find the paperwork I was looking forward to question Ms. Beddys on, but I did say I didn't have any... No further questions, but if you would allow me, I would just like to ask about a document she signed. Yeah, what number are we on? Ms. Beddys, is this your signature on this document?
Yes.
Do you remember signing this document?
To be honest, I don't have, like, recall actually signing it. I mean, I know I did, I just couldn't tell you what...
Okay. Can you read what the statement is that you signed to your name to?
I understand that proof of zoning is not a requirement under 28 PA Code, Chapter 717, relating to drug and alcohol recovery house licensure, and attest the recovery house for which I am applying to be licensed is compliant with all applicable local zoning requirements.
Okay. So is it your testimony that you signed this document without knowing the zoning requirements?
Objection, that's not what she said. She said she doesn't remember signing it because it's from 2022.
She testified earlier that she didn't have any knowledge of zoning requirements.
First of all, what's the relevance?
Yes. Yes.
I do. So this is... This attached... This is... The relevance of this is that, again, it was prior... It was... There was prior testimony that this organization, which she is an employee of, is following all DDAP regulations, and we could anticipate them following those regulations in this home as well. This is argument they are not currently following those regulations, and Ms. Beddys has relevant testimony since she signed this form about zoning compliance.
Number one, it's not relevant. Number two, she's not an owner of this...
Red and blue, we'll watch that one.
Let's be respectful of one another, everyone, okay? And be quiet. Arlene's trying to keep it under her roof. That's it. And if you don't comply, fine. Not doing this.
Thank you, I'm sorry. And I hope everybody keeps professional, their emotions intact. I don't believe it's relevant, she's not an owner of this company. She works for the company, she does inventory now and was a house manager. What's the relevance? Yeah, I did.
She signed this in official capacity in an application, official application to DDEP for licensure of 1531 South Maryland.
So the document itself specifically says, I understand the proof of zoning is not a requirement. That doesn't show that she signed any document saying that she knows the requirements of the zoning. It's actually the opposite.
The last sentence of this form is, I am applying to be licensed, that the recovery house for which I am applying to be licensed is compliant with all applicable local zoning requirements. So while they don't have to prove it, they still have to be compliant.
Right, so that's 20...
What's your question?
So my question is just, I want to go through some evidence to show... I would like to show that to counteract testimony that has been presented by Savage Sisters, that they were compliant with DDAP regulations, and this is showing that they are not, even though they have a... In their application, they swore that they would.
I don't believe that's what it shows, and if she's going to testify, then we should swear her in.
I'm not testifying, what I...
The basis, first of all, you don't need zoning requirements for a recovery house in Philadelphia, you're subject to DDEP, and it has nothing to do with zoning. You're subject to DDEP and it has nothing to do with zoning. And unless she's going to provide something to the contrary here or provide evidence of it, I don't even know what the question is, but the question was whether she complied with any zoning regulations. Well, she, she would not be the individual to ask these questions of.
Final note is that this is also from 2022 and she testified that she is no longer, she is no longer knowledgeable of the zoning requirements, which she doesn't have to be because she's no longer in that capacity.
The question there is whether or not she knew at the time she signed.
Right, that wasn't the question that Ms. Buzidlo asked. She asked if she is now aware of zoning requirements and Ms. Bettis said no.
I will ask a question then. At the time you signed this form.
I mean, this deals with PA Code 28, Chapter 717. Doesn't indicate, I mean, do you know what property this is? I mean, there's no foundation as to.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's nothing on here that says address, township, county. It's just.
Sure, I can, I can introduce those, those evidences. Well, give me a second.
At the time she was the manager, she was at for numerous houses, not exactly houses related to.
So I have handed up a copy of Savage Sisters' application for licensure with DDAP for 1531 South Myrtlewood. This is a public record. We were able to obtain it through a right-to-know request. I'm happy to have my client come up and testify as to that request and the documents that were produced, or we can have him authenticate it when he testifies later. Part of this application requires the applicants and members, employees of the applicant, to sign certain forms. Those forms include this atta, I'm sorry, I have a really hard time with that word, but the forms that I hand up in regards to compliance with zoning requirements as well as compliance with occupancy requirements for any licensed home. If you look, there is a couple of, I think it's on the second page where you see that you have to submit zoning requirements, you have to submit CO requirements, and if you're not, then you sign these forms.
Would you like me to respond?
Well, I guess first, rather than reading through the whole thing, is there a specific section you can point to?
Sure, let me just, I handed out all my copies, so give me one second to locate my copy of the application. All right. I have, I have. So if we look on page, on the second page, so the back page here, they're double-sided, page two of six, there is, if you go a few lines down, there's a couple of boxes and one says attached certificate of occupancy and then another one says attached proof of zoning approval. Those were not attached to this application, instead these affidavits were attached or attestations. I got, that's a hard word to use. So there, there are public records as part of their application for the right-to-know requests. If you would like me to bring up will to authenticate how we obtained these records, I'm happy to.
Here's my problem. First of all, this is a Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol application is what it is, which I told you, there is no zoning in Philadelphia. This is what they go through. It says anticipated date of operation of 1/1/20 and the form she gives us is signed in 2022. My client will admit that they submitted forms to drug and alcohol. She does not know that this form goes with this application and I don't know how anybody's going to come up and be able to authenticate that.
I can, I can see that this came directly from DDAP in terms of, and I'll also note that none of their Philadelphia homes are compliant, so it doesn't really matter which one it is.
Objection. I, I ask for some professionalism, not to make.
I mean, I can show that if we are arguing about which house it's relative to, it's actually not relevant, so.
Well, why wouldn't it be? I mean, you're, she's attesting that, you know, and this one does say 2020.
Sure.
So we're talking about an attestation that was presumably attached or submitted two years after what you're saying, the document here shows would have been submitted.
The, um, what I can tell you then is that if you look here on that application, this is an application that was submitted by Melanie Bettis, if you look there.
What I, what I think I would advise the board is, look, it's certainly a writing that she signed. She admitted it, so there's no hearsay issues. The question becomes whether what the argument is being made is what is exactly interpreted in the document. The document, as the attestation is, a two-year, dated two years after the application, assuming it was submitted at some point, but it does indicate that, I understand that proof of zoning is not a requirement under this particular code. I don't know whether or not Philadelphia, although counsel has stated that there's no requirement there, I don't know that, this board doesn't know that. But presumably if that's the case, then simply attaching the attestation that there's no application, there's no requirement.
I mean, it says in there that it's required to follow zoning code regulations, so why you don't have to prove that you have it, you have to follow the rules. They're just not asking for the documentation. Okay, so I would ask that then, which property were you the house manager of?
1531 South Myrtlewood.
Okay, and is that the property that doesn't, that's the property that, under your name, Melanie Bettis, was submitted, the application for licensure?
I would object to under your name, Melody Bettis. I will stipulate that in the application, it is under Savage Sisters Recovery, Inc., and that Melody Bettis is listed as the unit manager, not.
I'll stipulate to that as well.
But my, not that my, that this individual submitted that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm saying that this is. In 2020, it's my understanding that there was no licensure procedure and so while this house began operating in 2020, that is not when it was licensed.
Objection.
I mean, it, it, it says an initial provider application form, so there's obvious, there's some requirement here and then it's got an anticipated start date, operation date, sorry, of 1/1/20. So I mean, it, what you're submitting is presumably an application, but you're saying that the application process didn't start in 2020?
Just one second. Yeah. So if you.
I don't think it's hearsay, I understand the objection to it. I think let the document in, the document speaks for itself.
I, I do want to point out that in their own exhibits, they submitted a certificate of licensure for Savage Sisters Recovery, Inc. at 1531 Myrtlewood and that that was approved in January of 2024, not in 2020.
But she was a resident of that property from '21 to '22.
Correct.
It was submitted in '24?
It was approved in 2024. I can pull up some testimony from another hearing that, in which it testified that this was an, this application process for this property took several years.
Unless you're going to ask specific questions relevant to that particular exhibit, I think it's something that would probably be more ripe in your case in chief. Unless, again, I don't know if she was, I don't know what the exhibit is. I mean, certainly you could use it, I just think it'd have to be specific questions.
Sure, this, the license I was talking about was their, their exhibit.
That's a.
So I, I would, I would look, I think we would admit the documents, P4, P5, and they stand for, you know, they stand.
If I may, the 2024 is a reapplication. You don't just like apply one time, first of all, so that's not relevant to this.
Put it on her case in chief.
Well, really quick though, I think it is important to note that there's nothing tying these signatures to the document that's being admitted. Like, how do we know that that was connected at all?
I would ask that, I bring up my witness to testify to that then.
I think, I think the ruling is that we're going to admit the documents and they speak for themselves.
Yes.
All right. So at the time you signed this document, were you aware of the zoning requirements for this property and that they were being met?
I.
When she refers to this document, is she referring to the January of 2020?
I am referring to P4, the one that is signed by Ms. Bettis.
And which property is she talking about because it doesn't reference any property?
It is the signature of the house manager and she testified that she was the house manager of 1531 South Myrtlewood. Were you ever the house manager of any other property?
Yes.
As, where, what other properties were you the house manager of?
I was at, a house manager at 1516 South 30th Street.
Okay, and were you living there as the house manager when you signed this document?
No.
So I think with that testimony, we can prove that this is in regards to 1531 South Myrtlewood.
Would you have been asked to sign this document as a house manager for any other property?
Not at this time.
When did you become the program director?
August of 2022.
All right, so having, having established the connection with the property.
Objection as to that statement. If she wants to ask a question, ask a question.
Okay, my question is, when you signed this document, did you and Savage Sisters have the correct use and occupancy permits for this property?
Objection as to Savage Sisters. She can ask her if she was responsible.
You testified to it.
She is, she is the manager and she did sign the document and she would have not signed the document but for that particular residence. And she is attesting to what it says, so.
No, I don't think, I don't think it's attesting. She's attesting to what it says, but that's not what the question was, whether they had the proper zoning procedures. This says, I'm unaware of the zoning, but I will, I will, I will be compliant with the requirements, is what it says. No, it's not a covenant. It, it doesn't say anything that I agree that we have proper zoning procedure. It says, I will be compliant. I am unaware of them.
It says, and attest that the recovery house for which I am applying to be licensed is compliant. I will comply. It is compliant, meaning present tense, is compliant with the zoning code, as in currently I comply. So reading that, I think the question is, in signing this, were you aware of whether the particular house was.
1531 South Myrtlewood.
Was that compliant? Are you aware whether that was compliant with any zoning requirements of the.
As signing this document, because of the, and this, I'm taking you back to 2022, with the first sentence saying, I understand that proof of zoning is not a requirement, then yes, I agreed to be compliant because it wasn't a requirement.
Okay, so I just have to question you, have you read the last sentence that, or the last part of the sentence that follows that?
Yes.
Okay, so you understand that that's not what you were testing to, you were testing that you would, is that the building was compliant with local zoning requirements?
Yes.
Objection, the document speaks for itself.
Well, then I'm going to ask her to ask the question, Bob, because the last sentence that is not compliant with the license is compliant with all applicable local zoning requirements.
But if there are no zoning requirements.
Well, then she should just say that.
Then, that's what she did say. She did say.
That's what I was trying to introduce evidence that there is and then I got stopped.
Okay. If you don't know the answer, you don't know the answer. This is Supreme Court.
Okay, so in, at our previous hearing, I submitted, as one of my examples exhibits, the violations that are on 1531 Myrtlewood and also public record that's available publicly on atlas.filip.com concerning these violations as well as records of permits and violations for this property. It's a public record, I can type it in right now and bring it up if you want. These violations.
Objection, is there a question here?
I am.
I mean, she's testifying again. We should swear her in as a witness.
All right, so instead, here we go. I will ask you some questions about Philadelphia code that she's, that. I've handed up an exhibit with two pieces of Philadelphia code. Again, this is publicly available information if through, like, I think it's not, it's not 360 that they use, but it is, if you Google Philadelphia zoning code, it is a public record. It is also a local ordinance, which is publicly available. In 14, I've handed up two code sections, one involving the definition of family and then another which talks about our residential use categories in Philadelphia. Can you please read to me what the definition of family that's provided in 14-203-115?
Listen, I don't want to make this any longer than I have to. I don't know if this is the current Philadelphia code, so my objection would be, it is what it is for, for purposes of this, but it's not the entire code. In fact, it goes on to talk about communal living in this code, so we, we do not have all the relevant portions, even if it is, I'll let her use it to ask questions, but I have an objection as to it.
I would just argue this is a public record and they were able to look up this information as well and provide the code sections that might, might disprove what I'm arguing or go against what I'm saying. So.
And it's beyond the scope of the, the direct, but let's move on and, and at least try to get through some of this tonight.
She testified that she was a house manager and this is in her capacity of being the house manager, that she signed this document, and I am arguing that she signed this document with.
Objection as to that statement.
What other witnesses from Savage Sisters, other officers are you planning to bring up?
I'm going to bring up two others.
Who are they? Mary. What's their title?
The president and the founder slash executive director.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm happy to, I think, I think with the questions of, did she sign the paper?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I think we can, we can move on then. If there's going to be other witnesses that I can talk about compliance with zoning organizations, zoning regulations, I'm happy to do that.
Are you withdrawing your question?
I am withdrawing the question.
Bob, do you have any other?
Nothing further as witness.
Bob?
Nothing further.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind if we take a brief break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Five-minute recess. All right, please, quiet down. We'll resume the meeting of the Hartford Township Zoning Hearing Board. Jen? Oh, you're done? Calling your next witness.
Our next witness is Mary Nolan.
One second, Mary. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
And your full name and the capacity that you're appealing?
Mary G. Nolan. I am the president of the Board of Directors of Savage Sisters Recovery. Can you hear me?
Sure, sure, okay. Go ahead, Mac.
What are your job duties as the president?
I deposit all the checks that come in the mail. I send thank you notes. I go to the houses. I basically just socialize with the residents and I fix broken doorknobs and broken toilets and broken windows and sometimes I go and make homemade soup and big crusty Italian bread and we sit and eat together and chit chat. bread, and we sit and eat together and chit chat. And I'm known as a big hugger. They call me Mother Mary.
Um, working with your house, uh, working with the houses, one of the things that you mentioned, are you familiar with the reasonable accommodations that we are requesting here today?
Yes.
Could I ask that she speaks up, because I can't hear her.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Yes!
No, not that loud, sorry. Not that loud.
Sorry.
Just middle of that.
How about right here? How's that? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Cool.
And are you familiar with the FHA guidelines surrounding the reasonable accommodations for the disabilities, for the residents of the house?
Yes.
Utilizing your knowledge of that, can you explain why the requested accommodation is reasonable?
So, I actually was over there taking measurements. The measurements in that house, according to the relatively strict rules of DDP, which is the licensing body in Pennsylvania that licenses recovery houses, by square footage alone, we could house 25 men in that house, and we would pass and be approved. By room sharing standards, four to a room, we could house 21 men. We are asking for nine. I don't believe we could be more reasonable than nine. And I believe asking for us to have three in a five-bedroom house with an additional small office space bedroom that could be a six-bedroom for a house manager is more unreasonable than our request.
What have you done in your capacity as the president to gain a better understanding of why larger homes are more successful?
So that's been a topic of research for me for like a few years now. If you Google research studies on this, you're going to come up with like 6,000 responses. There are over 31 that I have read, and there are a lot of NIH studies that are compilations of studies specific to recovery houses and the social model of recovery houses. Basically, isolation is a trigger that causes an awful lot of relapses. And relapses in the market today aren't simply picking up a beer at the local bar. Relapses today very often end in death. One-hit wonders, pick up once and you're dead. So, where we stand right now...
Within those NIH research studies that you have conducted, are, was there any, are there any in particular that are substantially similar to Savage Sisters' request?
Well, most of the studies that are really comprehensive and years...
I would object to talking about these studies without providing the studies themselves, as this is all just hearsay.
I've got copies of many studies.
No, no.
You know, we could take all day. We could be here till...
And if I, if I may, I don't want to object, but again, I'd like to hear a little bit more of her background. I know she's the president, but does she have a background in counseling or drug and alcohol treatment facilities? It seems like she's informed on the topic. I'd just like to hear a little bit.
Yeah.
My, my background is not professional. It is personal experience.
Then I would object to her testifying as to professional studies.
That's why we have the study related to why we are requesting nine individuals. It's directly related, and it's also available on, on, on the public records, something we've allowed in tonight.
Yeah, I think the board's taken liberty of allowing a lot of hearsay, and I, I think we'll take the records and the board will give it due weight. Obviously, you know, her testimony would be opinion, but she can certainly testify to, and of opinion meaning not of an expert opinion, personal opinion. She can certainly testify to her personal experiences and what she knows as the president of Board of Directors and what she's gone through. Want to submit the documents, that's fine. Obviously, you don't have a custodian for them, but the board will admit them, as we have other hearsay. The board will give it its due weight.
So one thing I would like to say, in, in, in many of the studies, interviewing people in long-term recovery with three-plus years of successful recovery, when they're asked, "What about the sober living home made a difference in their life?", the number-one answer is the other residents, the social community, period. They need each other. They need to bond. They need to be together. They need to back each other up. They need each other's experience. They need to not be alone. And they need to be accountable, not even in their own rooms. It's not good for them.
And if I showed you a copy of the study that you read so in depth, would you recognize that?
I'm sure I'd recognize many of them.
Okay. It is the separate exhibit eight, but it's officially, um, A... A-10. Okay.
What's the name? Identify it for me.
Yes. Um, so this is the, it's called "Counteracting Not in My Backyard: The Positive Effects of Greater Occupancy Within Mutual Help Recovery Homes." And this is written by the National Institute of Health, and it is also a public document that you can find online. Okay. Would you please, and just clarify, are you familiar with this document?
Yep.
Have you read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you please just read the abstract here for us?
Group homes sometimes face significant neighborhood opposition. I mean, if its municipalities frequently use maximum occupancy laws to close down these homes. This study examined how the number of residents in Oxford House recovery homes impacted residents' outcome. Larger homes, for example, eight or more residents, may reduce the cost per person and offer more opportunities to exchange positive social support. Thus, it was predicted that larger Oxford houses would exhibit improved outcomes compared to smaller homes. Regression analysis using data from 643 residents from 154 U.S. Oxford houses indicated that larger house size predicted less criminal and aggressive behavior. Additionally, length of abstinence was a partial mediator in the relationships. These findings have been used in court cases to argue against closing down larger Oxford houses.
I would object to this study as it's regarding group homes, and they are applying for a single-family home and just to have more people in a single-family home, not a group home. There's different regulations in group homes than there are of single-family residences.
I can't talk to you.
There's an objection.
So this is, Savage Sisters is a recovery home using a substantially similar layout. They have a similar number of individuals with a similar stance and tactic in how to keep people in sobriety. This specific document from the NIH is a study of many, many same houses as Savage Sisters, and...
I would object to that. There's no, there's no record of this established that this is a similar, that any of these houses are functioning similarly in a similar-sized space in a similar neighborhood with similar residents.
If I may, that's actually the foundation that I laid was direct, surrounding this in her capacity as the president, what research has she done to tell us why this accommodation, in her opinion as the president, is reasonable? And this is specifically what she said was, this is the research that she used. She found similar homes, and so it is completely relevant and is already classified.
So is this being introduced for the truth of the matter?
Well, I think we already admitted the document itself. The board's going to give it due weight. And to reiterate, the rules of evidence are less strict here, and there's been many hearsay documents that we've let in throughout. The board's going to give it its due weight.
Understood.
Um, understanding the objection, I know the fact the document speaks for itself. The board has the opportunity to read the document, make a determination as to whether or not what's written in it is applicable and relevant to the particular matters of this case.
Thank you.
Oxford houses are recovery houses, all of them.
I'm just going to ask you a question.
In single-family homes. I'm outside.
Based on this document and the knowledge that you've said you've been accumulating for years now, can you please explain why this is relevant and reasonable to the accommodations that we are requesting at this home? In your opinion, based on...
Why my research? I think that we have a home, we have a home that is certainly large enough to accommodate nine people in recovery. We need the people. I personally think we should have more, but it is what it is. Nine is better than three or five. They need each other to get sober, period. They cannot do it alone. It has to be, you, you need to replicate the family. They need to bond with each other. They need each other's help and assistance, and they need to have somebody to talk to when they want to pick up, period. They can't be alone. A half of them, if they couldn't afford it, would end up homeless.
I have no further questions.
Jen?
Yes. Okay. So, um, as the, hold on, one second. Just give me a second. You talked about reasonable accommodations. And then you talked about state licensure requirements.
I did?
You did. You said under DDP that there would be 25 or 21 people allowed.
Okay. Square footage?
Yeah. But you are aware that there are local regulations that supersede, or not supersede, but that dictate single-family living in this township? And it's not just for recovery homes, it's for every individual in the township, correct?
Well, if I moved in with a family of 11, we wouldn't be here.
Understood, but that would be a family that's related to each other, and there's no requirements under the township.
I understand that, but I, I see us as a family, and we see ourselves as family.
All right. So, um, to that note, have you done any research about the definition of family in, like, legal requirements through case law? Or are you just basing your opinion on that you're a family and your experience and on maybe academic research?
I've done some research.
I don't think she's capable of making a legal conclusion.
Okay. I'm asking you...
The next question I was ready to object as to what hit.
I mean, she's also stating her opinion on things she has no knowledge on either.
Objection.
Training, excuse me, training on...
I think she testified to personal experience.
Correct.
And she testified to the study, but obviously, again, this, the study speaks for itself. It's just not an expert in the field, so the board will take the testimony as it, as it is.
I was, I was, what I was trying to get at is, you said you have done personal research. Has any of that research include legal definitions of families?
Yes.
And what was your conclusion of this?
Objection. She's asking her to make a legal conclusion.
I'm asking her to give her opinion, just like she gave her opinion.
I think she can give a personal opinion, I, you know, of what she thinks, but again, I, I don't disagree. She's not aware, so I can't ask her for a legal conclusion.
There has been an appellate case in the state of Pennsylvania where Pennsylvania Appeals Court has defined a group of people in recovery as a family in this state. As far as this county, I don't think it's ever come up. We're the first application this county has ever had, this township.
Okay. Because that's an incorrect statement for the county. I would just like to...
Township. Can we rephrase township?
Okay.
Okay? That's what I was told by Kelly Kirk, who was in charge of this when we started, back in November.
Okay. I understand. No reason to be so hostile.
That wasn't, if you think that was hostility...
Okay. So you...
Watch the video of last hearing.
I was here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was hostility.
Okay. So, um, you testified that larger is better to prevent isolation. Is there a reason that five people can provide company or socialization?
In early recovery, meaning many of our residents are 28 days clean. Every minute that they're alone is a bad thing.
So that's not an answer to my question?
Is a bad thing. Every minute that they're alone.
I asked a question. Is five people, can five per people provide socialization? It's a yes or no question.
I'm going to object, actually, because that's irrelevant. We're talking about nine people.
You had a reasonable accommodation.
Well, then I'm going to ask for 25.
Okay. So, um, is five people, can five people provide socialization?
Anything better than one can provide some socialization. Nine, I think, is a minimum that we are asking for to provide as much as possible.
And so you also, the, in any of the other houses that you are, that Savage Sisters run, that you're the president of the board for, are there less than nine people?
They are much smaller houses, and there is less opportunity for isolation. And the answer is yes, there are, because they're smaller houses.
Okay. So, in your opinion, the need for nine people is based on the size of the house and not on specific needs of the individuals?
That is not exactly what I said.
Okay. So how does the size of the house factor in to your socialization?
So, let's say the third floor was vacant.
Yep.
And somebody just went up there and wandered around and stayed alone all day and did nobody noticed.
I understand that. However, you did rent a house with five bedrooms, correct?
We did do that with the expectation that a reasonable accommodation would be given to us because we are exactly what they were written for.
Okay. But you know, are you familiar with the lease of this property? And so you're familiar with the exhibit that's already been submitted as part of your exhibit packet, that it was known at the time, the lease was signed, that only three people were allowed under the code?
When I spoke with Kelly Kirk, before we even came to this county, I spoke with every county, every township in Delaware County.
I'm not sure this question requires an answer about township. It was in the lease. I'm asking what was in the lease.
I'm, I'm going to answer as I would like.
All right. But let's cool it. Let's cool it. So, with no hostility, because the answers don't change with hostility, what is your question, Jen?
My question is, in, is she aware that in the lease that, that was signed by Savage Sisters, it explicitly states that the township would only allow three people to live in there unless they could prove the reasonable accommodation request?
May I answer the question the way I want to answer it? Is that acceptable to the board?
I, I asked a question directly about the lease. We can talk about other things later.
So it, it's a yes or no?
Objection. She can answer the question, and then she can answer the question to what she believes is the correct answer.
So the answer is yes.
Great. Thank you.
And then I would like to continue.
So, um, I haven't asked you another question.
I'm going to continue, and then you can ask me another question.
I asked a yes or no question.
You're being hostile. I want to clarify.
Guess what? I make the rules in this room, not you, Mary, not you, Bob, and not you, Jen. So I want you to complete your answer.
Thank you.
So you said, yes, you knew...
Yes.
That there was a limitation of three people when you signed the lease. And what else would you like to tell us?
So, before we found the house in Haverford, while we were looking in many counties, I spoke to Kelly Kirk in this board of zoning.
I would object to this as hearsay as well. We can't, she can't testify to what a zoning officer or anyone else says.
I want to hear what she has to say.
So Kelly Kirk told me that if we wanted to, I basically was checking all the rules, and she said that if we were going to come to Haverford, first thing we had to do was secure a property. We couldn't apply for anything unless we had secured a property. Once we secured the property, we were allowed to have three residents and apply for a variance. She said that she, her office, could give us that answer without a zoning hearing within 30 days. We sent in the application, and then she quit on the day that we were supposed to get our answer, and we had to start all over again, and obviously, there was some incorrect information there. So, yes, we signed a lease for three people, but a month before we even found the house, we were told that we would be able to get a decision relatively quickly from Kelly Kirk's office.
Again, I just object. This is complete hearsay. We have no proof of any of this.
This is my experience.
That, that's, your objection is noted.
I can't.
And if they want to bring Kelly, they can bring Kelly in to testify.
I would say that the question she asked was an opinion, and so she's basing her answer on what she was informed.
I think the chairman overruled the objection.
And in your opinion, or in your research that you've done, you are aware that in order to obtain an accom, reasonable accommodation under FHA requirements and as well as under our township codes, the person must have a disability, correct?
No further questions.
Wait, we have another attorney.
Don?
Ms. Nolan, this application is based upon the disability being drug addiction, correct?
Excuse me?
The, the application, the reasonable accommodation, you're claiming the disability that, that the reasonable accommodation is for is for the treatment... that the reasonable accommodation is for is for the treatment, ongoing counseling and treatment for drug addiction, correct?
Yes, and the belief, even if they're no longer addicted, that they are suffering from a stigma because of the opinion, which is also part of the FAA.
The application is asking for nine people at this property, correct?
Correct.
You would be allowed to have three people at this property under township code, and you wouldn't be here today, correct?
Correct.
Those three people, why do they need the additional six at this property in order to allow those three disabled persons an equal opportunity to use and enjoy the property on Ten B Avenue?
So these three people work not all the same hours. They're in a very large house alone, and they need the companionship of other people who are going through what they are going through, to stop them, to give them a lifeline when they want to pick up. They need to be around other people. You can't stay at an AA meeting 24/7, but you need that companionship of other people. And that, basically, when they get out of the structure of a 28-day rehab and they come to live with us, they're one day away from that rehab and that medical facility, and they're nowhere ready to face the world. They need to rebuild their skills, their social skills, they need to learn how to handle difficulties, and they need to learn life skills all over again. They need other people to do that.
And what do you believe is the minimum number of other people in order to make that successful?
What I believe and what we're asking for aren't the same. I believe there should be more than nine in that house. But if nine is what we agree to, then nine is below the minimum, in my opinion.
You have other houses that have seven, and they're smaller houses. That's your testimony.
You can't get lost and be alone in those houses.
So, am I understanding your testimony that the size of the house, you need essentially more people to fill that house in order for the program to be successful?
In order for it to work.
Not a busy space, I guess, is the...
In order to create the environment that will help them heal, yes. They need to not be alone. They need to be able to look across the room and see the face of someone who cares about their recovery. They need to be able to talk to each other, much more so, and they need to not be alone.
What, you don't have a number as to how many people could live there in order to not be alone?
Two to a bedroom. That's where we came up with nine.
No other questions?
Anything else, Mac?
Uh, yeah. Do any of your other houses have five bedrooms?
No. No.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that?
Jen, yes.
So, and this is relevant to, anyway, sorry. How was this house identified as the house you would rent in Havertown? Were you involved...
Let her answer the question you asked.
I don't know what you mean. How was this house identified?
Were you involved in the process of looking for a rental property in Havertown?
I was looking for a rental property in Delaware County.
Okay. And so with that, how did you identify this as the house that you would rent? Out of all of the rental properties in Delaware?
So, we were seeking four or more bedrooms, two or more bathrooms. The criteria was it had to be near possible employment opportunities, it had to be near an AA clubhouse with meetings every day, and it had to be within walking distance of good transportation. So of all the properties, and there were 27 in the log at the time that I was looking, Ten B Road was the trifecta.
Is there a reason for, excuse me, let me back up. What was the reason for wanting four or more bedrooms?
As opposed to what?
As opposed to...
You asked the question.
Yeah.
You said one of your criteria was four or more bedrooms, and she asked you why?
Because we wanted to house eight to nine people.
So, you set out to rent a property to service eight or nine people, but signed a lease knowing that this property could only service three, by right?
Objection asked and answered.
I agree.
Okay.
That's my next question.
Um, no further questions.
Okay. John, anything else? Bob, any, okay. Oh, Bill, did you have a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mary, bring her back up. Bill has a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mary. Wait till she's at the mic, Bill.
No, not too close.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, your residential program has been very successful in your mind, right?
It has. Statistically, according to DAP, we are the highest recovery rate of reporting houses, and there are now hundreds.
And the number of residents that you've had in your existing homes elsewhere has generally been between, what, five and six, I think, or maybe five and seven?
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Not counting the house manager, but, okay.
That included the house manager.
That includes, yeah.
That includes the house manager, okay. And so, what, if you're successful in that model?
Right.
Why did you want to go to a larger home?
So, the whole reason that we are in Delaware County, let me just say this, we were invited by Delaware County to apply for a grant, and in that grant, to specifically ask to open a male and female recovery house.
Okay.
So, our attempt is to put these people in a drug-free environment, away from the temptations that are in some other areas. And we sought to make a nice community for people to live in, to get sober in, period. Why look for a smaller house?
Well, my question wasn't that. My question was, not a smaller house...
Why four bedrooms?
That if you've got a successful recipe for residential settings and the programs you administer in them, why go for a bigger setting?
So, there are a lot of recovery houses in Philadelphia. There are very few in Delaware County. We have waiting lists for all of our houses. We're only opening two in Delco. That's what we agreed to, that's what we're doing.
I would object to the characterization of very few in Delaware County.
You answer the question.
So, in my opinion, there are not enough.
Okay.
I get calls, I live in Radnor, I get calls all the time because my number is listed on Savage. And they call me and say, oh, wow, you know, you're in Bryn Mawr, you're in Radnor, that's where I want to be. And I said, no, all our houses are in Philadelphia. And they get upset, and they hang up, and that's that. And that's been going on since Savage began. So, when we were going to open a house here, knowing that we're opening just two houses, we wanted to open as much space as possible to accept as many people that need a place. The people that come here, nobody in Philly wants to come to these houses. Nobody wants to relocate. The people that want to live in Delco are pretty much from Delco.
Okay. So, again, I'm trying to understand the need for the reasonable accommodation. You could have looked for a smaller house, could you not? I mean, that one that is more similar to your existing home programs.
We would have still needed a reasonable accommodation.
Okay, but I'm just wondering why you needed a house this big?
Because we're not going to open 10 houses in Delco, because we're not going to be able to help people. So we wanted to make the most powerful impact in the county based on what we're opening, and the most powerful impact would house more people. Not a lot more people. We have seven in row homes in Philly, we're asking for nine in a five-plus-bedroom house.
And given that the house, in comparison to your Philadelphia locations, in theory, could accommodate many more people?
It could.
It could, right? Why do you believe that it would be successful at eight or nine people rather than 20 or 21 or 22, that you have already, I think, testified, would probably create a better result in the home for the people living there if they had more people? So, are you worried that if you only have nine people, it won't be as effective to operate your programs in that setting?
I personally, that's me personally, okay? Because we've signed a...
And as the president...
We've signed a lease for nine, okay? That was negotiated between the operating director.
I object, that's not what the lease was signed for.
Well, it was supposed to be.
Okay.
So it can be corrected.
Can you answer my question? My question was...
Bill, there's an objection. So, what was your objection, Jen?
I just object that this is not accurate testimony at all, based on the evidence and the record. And she even testified earlier in her statements that this was a lease signed for three people with the potential for nine with a reasonable accommodation. It's an incorrect characterization of what this house was, what the lease was signed to be.
All right.
Okay.
Got it. There's no need for a ruling here.
Yeah, again, I'm just trying to understand, from your view as the president, someone who's innately familiar with the success of the program and how it works best in different settings, why a very large house in relation to your other homes, that would be relatively lightly populated compared to the density in your other homes, you believe will be successful? Or whether, I'm wondering whether you have too much home to run your program successfully based on your successful track record in other locations?
So personally, I believe 12 would be a better number. However, there's a landlord involved and a lease involved, and I'm not the one who made that decision. I would personally, from my experience and my research, think more people would be better. I think nine will be the minimum to create the environment that will help these people heal.
And the nine is based on your experience in your other homes that sound like they're more densely populated? I'm just trying to figure out why you got comfortable with nine in this location when the density in most of your other homes seems to be higher?
Like I said, I personally believe more would be better, but the agreement is the agreement, and I think it will be the maximum that we can have according to. The lease has obviously got a mistake in it which can be corrected, but that was negotiated before the lease was signed.
And when you, you mentioned the criteria that you were looking at when you were looking for a home in Delaware County, or in Havertown Township, whichever it was. And you were, you know, trying to figure out which ones are close to job centers and which ones are close to AA centers and which ones are close to transit. Did you look at other homes that met some of this, and were they more similar to your existing homes in your program?
They were all at least four bedrooms, two baths, and our homes, and our other houses are three bedrooms max, some one, some two bedrooms. So, they were all bigger, and the objective was to create a space for more people to recover. I looked at Bryn Mawr, I looked at Upper Darby, and I looked at Havertown. And I looked at, we actually had an agreement with someone in, I don't know, Lansdowne. Lansdowne? I want to say Lansdale, but it's Lansdowne. But they weren't willing to give us the property until mid-December, and so we took Ten B because we could get it November 1st.
And so you were willing to go for the bigger home despite the, perhaps, cap at nine, and live in a less dense home because you wanted a bigger home?
I, if I'll tell you the truth, I called every single available property in Delaware County that would have fulfilled our needs, and I got insane pushback. We've never had this kind of...
On price or on what?
No, on our purpose.
And your purpose.
Right, on our mission. You have an awful lot of ignorance and prejudice in the society toward people in recovery.
I would object to this as hearsay again about what the landlord said to her. I know, I'm just noting my objection.
Okay, it's noted. We're not going to...
This is my experience.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I have some follow-up questions based on that testimony.
Okay, go ahead, Jen. I'm going to keep the record.
Based upon questions from the board?
I'm going to keep, yes.
Can we know what this document is?
I'm about to hand it to you and tell you what this is.
This is the listing for a property in Delaware County. I'm going to leave some documentation beforehand.
Okay.
Ms. Nolan, it was your testimony that you were directed or given a grant to open two recovery homes in Delaware County, correct?
Correct.
One male and one female.
Correct.
And the one located in Havertown would be the male home, correct?
Correct.
Has the property for the female home been identified?
Yes.
Is that female home located at 142 Springer Ten in Upper Darby?
Springton Road, yes.
Springton, sorry. Can you take a look at that, at the record from Multiple Listing Service, which is public records? And can you tell me, actually, don't look at that. Can you tell me how many bedrooms that home has?
It has four.
Four. Is the square footage as large as Ten B?
I don't know. I doubt it.
Okay. And how many people are you going to have live in that home?
I don't know, we haven't even fully occupied it yet. We asked Upper Darby Township, I should know, but I don't remember.
Okay. Have you applied for a youth, a youth marriage or any sort of youth commitment?
It was a one-hit wonder in Upper Darby Township.
Okay, and how many did they...
Wait, 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 what does that mean?
We applied, we got it, good night.
And so how many people were you approved to live?
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Was it more or less than nine?
Many.
No, exactly, nice.
Now, Mac, you have to let the witness, that's the fact.
She said be nice, is all she said.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
How long ago was it, Mary?
Couple months.
And you don't remember how many people they served you for in the house? Okay.
You know what, hold on, hold on a second. So there's three bedrooms upstairs, right? So that would be either six or seven, and then the house manager's downstairs, so that would be seven or eight. So it's seven or eight.
Okay.
And how many square feet is it?
Less than nine.
Don't look.
Correct?
It is less than nine.
And it is a smaller home than the one in Havertown, correct?
Correct.
So you were able to secure a home with less, with less of an accommodation needed, correct? Excuse me, let me rephrase that question. Let me rephrase.
I'm going to put my objection on the record.
Okay.
The fact that this is a larger square foot home, it's a reasonable accommodation question, and the fact that a smaller home has more people in it, none of that is relevant to this application. And whether they have a two-bedroom home in Philadelphia with seven people in it, with less of a, less of a, more of an accommodation in Philadelphia, or more of an accommodation in Upper Darby, so the square footage of this home, which would hold 20 people, is not relevant. It's whether it's a reasonable accommodation that we're looking for here under the law.
On top of it, I think it's been well-established that there are other locations that have six to seven residents. You know, so I think they've consistently testified they have other homes that are less than nine. I think the question that's presented before this board is whether nine is a reasonable, or actually, six, reasonable accommodation. F3 and a Freddie.
Correct. So it'd be for an additional three. Additional six, yes.
Is sufficient and reasonable for this project. So I mean, the line of questioning asking whether they have other properties... So I mean, the line of questioning, asking whether they have other properties that have less, I mean, I think they've clearly testified in that fact.
My question here, and I can probably phrase it better, this is another four-bedroom home, and they are testifying that there's, that, you know, the reason they need this many people is because of the number of bedrooms. I, okay, I understand. I just wanted to also, but they did testify that, like, this was the property they could locate in Delaware County, and they had located another property, a smaller property, that would require less people.
The question is simply, you know, did you locate another property in Delaware County that has less than nine people or something?
Um, excuse me. I located many homes, and...
The one that you, the one that you have here.
She asked her, Ms. Nolan, for her not to look at it.
Well, I'm, but one, she testified they have a house at 142 Springton Road.
In Upper Darby?
Correct.
Yes.
You gotta prove it.
She can look.
We did.
And it's, and it's less than nine, correct?
Seven or eight.
Seven.
All right, is that it, Jen?
I did just want to ask Mac if you're going to have another witness that would be more qualified to talk about the grant application process, or if Ms. Nolan is the appropriate party?
There'd be another witness.
Great, thank you.
In response to that, I have one more question.
Okay.
Are there less bedrooms in this Delaware County home than there are in the 10B home?
Yes.
And are there less residents because there are less bedrooms?
Yes.
No further questions.
And we're not, we're not going to...
Um, if I could take that back, because I have, I have questions for probably another witness based on this. This was not the right...
We're not gonna...
This was not the right...
All right, are you keeping track of the exhibits? I lost them.
Yeah. Do you want, well, can I talk to counsel briefly, sidebar?
Me, two, okay.
And Bill, Ernie, Ernie, hey, Ernie? Ernie, why don't you go in the caucus room, because John, you know what, John, the attorney?
John, I'm sorry, John. He's way over there. I don't see him.
All right, we're gonna go off the record. Jeff?
Ron.
All right, we'll resume the meeting of the Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board. Mr. Angelos, so you had your big pow-wow with the lawyers?
I did. And the, the purpose of discussing with counsel was how many witnesses we have left, timing and where things were. I understand that the applicant has one witness left. I anticipate that that might be two hours' worth of testimony. So, at this point, counsel does not, the board typically ends at around 10, but we could go to 11. The door actually closes at 11, so it's no longer a public hearing at that point, so that's definitely the witching hour. But breaking, similar to what we did last time in the middle of a witness, it kind of takes away the continuity of the questioning, and then we got to keep track of what that witness said and the exhibits that were presented and keep that together. So, the board is going to, with the consent of counsel, continue the hearing tonight until the April, April 23rd?
May?
I'm sorry, this is where I'm at. It would have been, yeah, what, two days ago, right? May 23rd at 7:15. And then, obviously, we're still within the timeframes. We have the ability to allow applicant every 45 days, up to 100 days before their application, but just to make sure we're compliant, does all counsel agree to waive any applicable timeframe throughout we're going through this?
Yes, but are we at 7:00 or 7:15?
We're gonna do 7:15 only because, yeah, we're talking about 7:00, 7:15, just to be safe, to make sure that our board members can get here.
I, I also agree.
Okay.
May 23rd?
May 23rd at 7:15.
And again, it's a special meeting just for this case.
Just for this case, that's correct, yeah. I mean, that'll be, we have two other meeting nights that month. It'll be just for this case. Hopefully, I don't know, how many witnesses do you have?
I have one major witness and like maybe...
Wait, wait, hey, hey, please, give it, please keep it down.
So it's possible, I think we could probably definitely get done applicant's case in chief next time, depending upon how quickly we move through that, start your case in chief, and then hopefully, you'll be able to conclude that with just one more hearing, and then we should be done. We're gonna continue to try to keep this on that month's schedule so that we can get this done. Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Any other administrative matters, Jess, Bill, Jesse, Ed? All right, with that, this case is continued to, a special hearing on May 23rd at 7:15 p.m.
Thank you, counsel. Thanks, everybody.
You're adjourned.